The April 27, 2023 Planning Commission meeting. 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 And we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance as always. And we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance as always. And we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance as always. And we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance as always. If everybody could stand and join us. If everybody could stand and join us. If everybody could stand and join us. If everybody could stand and join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic, the one nation, under God, in whose whole liberty and justice for all. And to the republic, the one nation, under God, in whose whole liberty and justice for all. And to the republic, the one nation, under God, in whose whole liberty and justice for all. And to the republic, the one nation, under God, in whose whole liberty and justice for all.
And I'll take roll call. 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 We have Commissioner Newman. We have Commissioner Newman. We have Commissioner Newman. We have Commissioner Newman. She is present. She is present. She is present. She is present. Commissioner, my guy is absent. 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 Commissioner Inga. Commissioner Inga. Commissioner Inga. Commissioner Inga. And Vice Chair Heschler. And Vice Chair Heschler. And Vice Chair Heschler. And Vice Chair Heschler.
I'm here.
I'm here.
I'm here.
I'm here.
And Chair Keldorf. And Chair Keldorf. And Chair Keldorf. And Chair Keldorf.
Here.
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 We have quorum. We have quorum. We have quorum. We have quorum. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, now is the time for public communications. 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 Anybody wishing to address the dais, come on up. Anybody wishing to address the dais, come on up. Anybody wishing to address the dais, come on up. Anybody wishing to address the dais, come on up. Seeing none, we will close public communications. 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 Are there any written communications other than what's in the agenda packet? Are there any written communications other than what's in the agenda packet? Are there any written communications other than what's in the agenda packet? Are there any written communications other than what's in the agenda packet?
No, nothing received by staff. No, nothing received by staff. No, nothing received by staff. No, nothing received by staff.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. And consent calendar, we have one item approval of the March 23 minutes. And consent calendar, we have one item approval of the March 23 minutes. And consent calendar, we have one item approval of the March 23 minutes. And consent calendar, we have one item approval of the March 23 minutes. Take a motion to approve the 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 minutes. All in favor? All in favor? All in favor? All in favor?
Aye. 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 Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye.
Moving on to continued business, none, public hearings. 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 We have one new business item. 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 And that is a study session and we're just waiting on a consultant. And that is a study session and we're just waiting on a consultant. And that is a study session and we're just waiting on a consultant. And that is a study session and we're just waiting on a consultant. Should we adjourn? Should we adjourn? Should we adjourn? Should we adjourn?
We can recess until... We can recess until... We can recess until... We can recess until...
Recess, okay. Recess, okay. Recess, okay. Recess, okay. Yeah, not adjourn. Yeah, not adjourn. Yeah, not adjourn. Yeah, not adjourn. We'll recess. We'll recess. We'll recess. We'll recess.
Starting to recess. Starting to recess. Starting to recess. Starting to recess.
So. Thank you, Eduardo.
Letting you guys know, keeping you guys on the note.
Appreciate it. Okay, I think we are ready for our study session on the R3 overlay and mixed use overlay development standards. This is our second study session. Welcome back.
Thank you. We are here. So I guess it's proper to say in a formal meeting, I'm John Kaliski. This is AMI Bot. We're JKA and we're your consultants for the R3 and mixed use overlay multi-family design standards. You want to go to the next one, Michael? Oh, Eduardo. So tonight, we're going to try to describe to you some of the project challenges and the timeline, which we're on time, so that's good. But it is a challenging project. It's a complicated project. There are competing goals and objectives. We're going to try to describe what our big picture approach was that we developed based upon the work that we've done to date, which included incorporation in our thinking of the comments that we got the last time we were here, as well as at least two, I think, sessions that we've had with planning and with Michael Allen. We're going to give you a sense of what the emerging framework is, of the actual standards that result from that big picture. And then, of course, we will welcome comments and discussion. And I mean, I'm always happy if you interrupt us while we're going on in case you have a question in real time as opposed to being feeling like you can't say anything, which I'm sure you don't during a presentation. Okay, you want to go to the next one? So we started the project in January. We had our kickoff meeting. We had our first study session with you in February. For the last six weeks or so, we have been working on the administrative draft of the objective design standards, which in essence, we have compiled all of the existing zoning ordinances. We've been developing approaches to how we might work with those, amend those, et cetera. But we haven't actually got a final version of that yet. This meeting tonight is very important in terms of forming that. But we've got enough of it done that we're ready to present a framework of it. And then based upon that, we can, in essence, move towards our final objective design standards, which would have public hearings in May. So this is a really good moment to capture folks' sense of where we are or where we need to get. Do you want to go to the next one? So to remind you, our role that we were given when we were brought on board for this project was to develop design standards for an adopted overlay zone and mixed use sites that optimize the fit of larger multi-family and mixed use projects within an existing two, three, and four-story context. I mean, obviously, some of them, as we'll get into, go a little bit bigger. This is at Franklin and Whiting, where it's basically two stories. And when we say develop design standards, we really mean tools that are measurable and quantifiable, which is what the mandate to cities and local jurisdictions is that has been provided to them by the state. Do you want to go to the next one? And it's good to mention the state. This is in the Imperial neighborhood, I believe, because that continues to change. From the time that this project started, which was, I guess, you could say sometime last fall, when you were going through your housing objectives and things like that. State law continues to evolve. I think that when we first were doing some of the SB9 work and when probably the city was contemplating doing this exercise, they were assuming there was kind of a 35% density bonus allowance as of January 1st. That's now 50%. And so the challenge becomes even more nuanced. I think when we were here six weeks ago, we were still just automatically saying 35%. We realized that that keeps getting pushed. So that is thinking that we've built into our work. And if we really get into detail of it, you should be able to pull up all your sort of quantifiable charts and stuff like that that we've developed to try to understand that both mathematically as well as in terms of, say, physically. Based upon the math, we became increasingly convinced that the city can basically maintain three-story height limits as a base condition within the mixed use overlay zones. Which means that if somebody came in and invoked the density bonus laws, they would be able to get a fourth story. But we don't think that we have to automatically say that the city has to have design standards that allow four stories, though in essence, you would be doing that because someone who wanted a density bonus project could say they wanted a fourth story. Our basic approach has been to, in essence, adjust, tweak, evolve, whatever you want to call it, your existing R3 standards to try to provide for this additional housing without sacrificing community character. And the easiest way of describing it is that as you get more units on these sites, our thought process has been allow them to expand to the maximum three-story envelope in order to avoid having to go to a fourth story, particularly for projects that are in the base condition before any type of bonus would be granted. But at the same time, have within that overlay the acknowledgement of the intensity of housing or density of housing that is needed in order to meet the city's RENA requirements and I guess the housing element that you've passed or are in the process of working on. One of the ways, one of the things, and I feel like we can always do better at this, I would love to do better in it than we've done up to this point, is to really, like, think of it as if you're walking down the street. If you can emphasize the parkways and the yards and the landscaping and maintaining that versus worrying too much about the architectural expression, that, and in some way, maintain this three-story character, that you will have at least, as people who have to, in some way, steward the city's design standards, you will have largely succeeded. And so that's what our kind of overarching goal is. Or at least as an idea.
We have a chance to dive into that topic.
That's what we're going to do. And we may have succeeded in some ways and failed in others, I'm sure. Okay, so you want to go to the next slide? So the big picture. Based, and I think we talked a little bit about this when we were here before, but we developed it further. We wanted to develop a neighborhood-by-neighborhood approach. We did not want to develop approach after visiting all of the different parts of the city where this mixed use overlay is, that treated all of them exactly the same because we didn't think they were all exactly the same. And we also don't think that the opportunities you have as a city are exactly the same as you look at each of these neighborhoods individually. So you want to go to the next one? So we developed a big picture. And we'll get into each of these neighborhoods in a moment. But the easiest way to describe it would be that in the Imperial neighborhood, which is to the north, you've got an open space resource that's there and is never going away. away, that's, really creates a very strong setting for that frontage along Imperial. In the Washington Park neighborhood, you also have a very strong open space resource, which is basically a power right-of-way, but it's got extensive green space under it. It's never going away. Franklin Whiting is really a downtown-adjacent community that's very finely textured, it's a bit hilly. It's pretty intense in a good way and intricate in a good way right now. And then you've got the Smoky Hollow adjacent neighborhood, which is right up against a district that's interesting, but really is very different in character than a lot of the other residential districts around the city, and then kind of serves as a transition to an R3 neighborhood as well. And what you see here is a lot of little writing, we'll get into that neighborhood-by-neighborhood, but this was the initial graphic, or a version of this was the initial graphic that we presented to staff, and then we developed the rest of this work based upon it. Do you want to go to the next one? So in the Imperial Avenue and Washington Park neighborhoods, you've got these two parks, Washington Park to the right, which is Washington Park neighborhood, and we think it's called generically Clutter's Park, though there's also a dog park, but it's not all the dog parks. So we weren't 100% sure that we got the name right, but when we looked it up, it was called Clutter's Park, and it's named after someone named Clutter, right?
I mean, that's what the apostrophe D has been used.
Right.
For all the research of them.
But that was really where we started, because we really sort of felt that, well, you know, a lot of the time, communities are super concerned that they're, when you do multifamily communities, you don't have open space associated with that multifamily construction, but in this case, you've got really major resources right across the street. So in this sense, and again, think about this from the standpoint of expanding the envelope to avoid going up, we thought you could consider reducing the front yard setback to five feet versus the 15 feet that's otherwise required. You could consider maximizing the lot coverage and reducing the open space requirements, which would allow for more parking spaces at the ground level and also allow for more units on the typical level, which would, again, reduce the pressure in a base condition of having to go up. So there'd be more opportunities, you'd be able to achieve that intensity or density that you're required to have in this mixed-use overlay without necessarily popping up. You could consider three stories with a density bonus option for modulated and setback fourth story, in the case of a bonus project. You asked us to think a bit about parking when we were here before, and we've gone back and forth and back and forth on this, and we've talked to staff, and where, at least for the purposes of this meeting, we settled on was one parking space per bedroom. And we're totally open to ideas, but that's in part based upon the math that we've done, and it's in part based upon an assumption that, given the geometries and given the intensities of densities that we're talking about, that anything above and beyond that would almost not work anyway, because you can't get enough cars unless you start doing parking lifts or double levels of parking or going underground. And while someone might choose to do that, the vast majority of projects won't.
Can we talk, is now an appropriate time to talk about that?
Absolutely, if you want to stop.
Question, is the assumption that in the R3, you really can have no more than two bedroom units? If we had three and four bedroom units, that feels like that would be excessive.
Well, I think that may be the easy way, and you'll see this in some of the diagrams that come up, though we need to further develop those, is if you start developing, okay, the easiest way to describe it is on a 7,000-square-foot lot, you end up basically maximizing your yield of cars on one level at grade at about eight cars. And so if you do half a car per unit, you end up with 16 units. If you do one car per bedroom, you basically either have, say, eight units of studios and ones, or then you start saying, if it's a two-bedroom, you all of a sudden start reducing your count, but the units potentially get larger. So another way of describing it is, is that if you max it out or maximize it at one-bedroom units, you end up with units that are going to average somewhere between 650 square feet to 750, maybe a little bit more, square feet per unit if they're all one-bedrooms. So if you were to change that to all two bedrooms, you'd have, instead of eight units, you'd have four units. And again, I'm talking about a 7,000-square-foot lot with a three-story building on it, assuming that most of the ground floor is parking, that all you really have on the ground floor is a little tiny lobby, a little tiny utility room, two stairs, and the rest of it is basically parking. You get eight cars in there, and you have two floors above that, each one of which has four one-bedroom units on it. Or if you start bringing in two-bedroom units, in a base condition at least, you get a larger unit, but you still have the same number of cars to play with, unless you start building automated parking of some sort, meaning a parking lift or a puzzle system, or you go, you try to have half the cars go down half a level and half the cars go up a level, because your lots aren't that big. If you try to go fully down one level, it's going to become fairly inefficient in terms of how many cars you get on that second level.
So does that formula not take three bedrooms into account?
It could, but then...
Could you cap it and say no more than two cars?
You could. You could absolutely do that. And I think that's one of the questions we left open, because when we were here before, I got some sense that there was a bit of concern about capping it beyond two bedrooms. I don't know whether I heard that right or not, but we just wanted to open up. When we first presented this work to Michael, we said it should be one car per unit, and we based that on the idea that if somebody does a density bonus, they automatically can get one car per unit under the state law. If you look at Los Angeles, what they've done in their transit-oriented communities, you can, it goes to .5 cars per unit, or sometimes .5 cars per bedroom, depending upon which tier you're in. And then, of course, if you're in a, if you're within, under state law, now a half-mile of a transit stop, it's, you don't have to provide any parking, but we don't think any of your overlays are within half-mile of a major transit stop. Though if tomorrow Metro introduced something on Sepulveda Boulevard, that would, that would change that, obviously. Though they're probably not going to, because they're running a train over there, so there'll probably be less bus service by the time they're done.
In that, a studio would count as how many bedrooms?
One.
One?
Yeah, we would say a studio is the same as a one-bedroom. At least in the way that, and we have a diagram that shows that in a minute, and so we can come back to this issue. Under lot width, we would say in these two neighborhoods, we're not worried about lot width, per se. That, one of the interesting things is, in both situations, you have some of the larger buildings that you have in the city, and because that you have this open space directly across the street, or in the case of Washington Park, because it backs up the Pacific Coast Highway, we weren't that worried about the complexes getting big. You'll see that when we get to the other two neighborhoods, we try to limit the building size, not the ability of people to consolidate lots. So why don't we go to the next one, because that will describe that a little bit. So in the Franklin Whiting neighborhood, we're saying, consider maintaining the existing R3 setback requirements. That's different than what we just talked about for Imperial and Washington. We have basically the same lot coverage ideas, which we'll describe in more detail in a moment. Right now, your city code basically says you can't have more than 53% of the total lot, I believe, covered by a building. I think what we're proposing is 65% of the buildable area, which we'll describe in a few moments. We're suggesting that the height be three stories with a density bonus option for modulated and setback fourth story, if somebody did that. We're consider the same one parking space per bedroom requirement. Here, we're saying, again, if somebody wants to consolidate lots, we wouldn't limit them, but you will see, when we get a little bit further, that we're saying that the maximum building size can't be more than 140 feet of building frontage with a maximum planned diagonal of 245 feet, which is, in essence, the building you would achieve if you consolidated three lots. So we're saying, look, if somebody consolidates three lots, they could build a bigger building in that neighborhood, and there are some examples of that, but if they got six lots, they'd have to put 25 feet of separation between two buildings. Because, or, because if they maxed out the size of the building under that 245-foot dimension, it would work for three lots, but if they got a fourth lot, they'd probably want to do two buildings with a 25-foot separation. So in essence, what we're trying to do is saying, within this neighborhood, you've got to, in some form or manner, begin to acknowledge the sort of smaller scale that exists there. And then finally, we have something that I'm interested in, I don't know if anybody else is, but it's what we're calling single parcel incentive units. When we read the economic report from Economic Planning Systems, one of the things that really struck us was that they didn't really address, how do you create an incentive for people that own existing buildings in these neighborhoods, who are basically being given a choice of either, hey, take advantage of this new density or tear, and tear your building down? What is the other, there's no incentive that's in there for them maintaining the building. Since most of these buildings already are two stories that we're talking about, sometimes they're three, what we're saying is, maybe consider allowing people to build two penthouse units on top of an existing building with a modulated setback, meaning they can't build 100% of the roof coverage, and they don't have to provide any parking for those two units.
What is the likelihood of that?
Well, I'm not sure. But what I think is that increasingly, as time goes on, I think that the idea that you can do something with your property as opposed to just either consider it exactly as it is, because most of those lots are pretty built out right now. And I think that my concern was, was that I wanted people to have to think about another option. So we have not done the economics of that, but I, and in fact, the EPS report states that there's not much economic incentive to do anything on those properties. So, but the idea was dangle something out there, at least.
No, I like that. I think that is a clever way of looking at it. I was just thinking, an old building that has a roof that's not, has no structural capabilities of adding another unit on top.
Well, you have to spend the money to bring the structure all the way down to the ground.
But I like...
I know that I personally have wanted to buy a two-story apartment building in Los Angeles for empty nine years and stick an elevator in it and build a penthouse unit and have that be my retirement property, basically. I mean, I will admit, it's an idea, and, you know, maybe we could, it would be nice to be able to do some interesting economic analysis on that. There's a way we could theoretically do that, but I wanted to throw that out, because it did bother me in the EPS report that they basically said, well, you have to build more density, you got to get to the 67 dwelling units to the acre, but there was no consideration of, can the city provide an incentive for existing property owners to improve their property, rather than just think of it as an all-or-nothing proposition?
I think that's smart.
And that is exclusive to this neighborhood?
This neighborhood and, can you hit the next slide? The next neighborhood, Smoky Hollow adjacent neighborhood. In this one, we're saying, consider no setback requirement along Franklin Avenue, where there are a bunch of buildings that have no setbacks. Otherwise, maintain the existing R3 setback requirements. So again, we're trying to sort of acknowledge the condition that exists in the neighborhood, where Franklin Avenue has a very specific character, saying, if you're building a residential building, it should be okay to maintain that character, which then creates a little bit more footprint for people, which means it becomes a little bit more viable to maybe get into a three-story envelope. On the lot coverage, the height, the parking, the lot width, and the single parcel incentive units would all be the same as what we just discussed in the Franklin Whiting neighborhood. Okay, you want to go to the next one? Okay, so now we'll try to describe, and this may be harder to get, figure out, like, what that starts to translate. If you were to take that approach, which is being offered as kind of a first pass as a way of thinking about objective design standards that we might possibly implement in a document, if you were to take that approach, how does it start to play it out? What do you see? Well, first of all, in your existing R3, you're basically limiting things more or less to seven, 27 dwelling units to the acre. In the overlay district, you'd be allowing 43 to 50 dwelling units to the acre as a base condition. If you were to bonus that under the new state law that went into effect on January 1st, you would end up at the 67 dwelling units to the acre, that in some ways is at least the number that we were asked to work with, and I think of all these numbers was the one that somehow got translated to us as being the one that the decision-makers in the city were comfortable with, even though they were uncomfortable. So we basically sort of were working from both a sort of like diagramming standpoint as well as a math standpoint, trying to understand how these things work at 43 to 50 dwelling units to the acre. Do you want to go to the next button? On the overlay sites, and there are only a very few overlay sites, why did that number go to 48 to 55? Do you know?
Yeah.
You want to get up here and say in the microphone?
In the mixed-use overlay sites, we're making an assumption that with the density bonus, you'd want to get to 75 dwelling units to the acre, which would encompass the fact that there would be a commercial component as well.
Right.
John, if I can also, while we're here, just provide a little background or context, if the commissioner remembers, the housing element offered two scales of density, one for the R3 overlay and one for the mixed use, that being somewhere around 67 to 70 units to the acre for the R3 overlay, 70 to 80 units to the acre, or 75 to 80 units to the acre for the mixed-use overlay. And so those numbers have sort of remained true, because that's what's been adopted in the housing element, and as John referenced, the task at hand was envisioning, if that density does get built, how do we, how do we create objective design standards to keep it within the box? And during the last, that study session and previous discussions, our conversations have been, what is that box? What does it look like? And that's what's helped inform the results that you're seeing tonight. And the reason why we're seeing a range of the, previously the 43 to 50, and with the mixed use, the 48 to 55, is because we're still looking at, once you layer that density bonus to get to the 67 or to get to the 75 units to the acre, what's the right base density? And if you recall, a previous commissioner had asked for there to be a desire to keep the development agreement component as part of our development process. And so we're also considering, what base density does there need to be before implementing a development agreement, which could help you realize a higher density, and then you could layer the density bonus on top of that to achieve the 67 or the 75. And so that's why you're seeing a little bit of a range of a number, but the end goal is achieving that 67 or 75 density. And so these design standards or objective design standards are geared towards that density, but the base density is going to be, likely be much lower. If that makes sense, and if everybody recalls those conversations.
Okay, so you want to hit the next one? Okay, in terms of lot width, right now, you're allowed, you're supposed to have a 50-foot minimum width, you'd still have the same 50-foot minimum width. Want to go to the next one? Same minimum lot area, 7,000 square feet, wouldn't change. Want to go to the next one? In terms of setbacks, you can see that along Imperial Avenue and Washington Park neighborhoods, we have a smaller setback, but we have open space directly across the street in both cases. Whereas in the Franklin Whiting neighborhood and the Smoky Hollow adjacent neighborhood, except along Franklin Avenue, we would be proposing a, in essence, maintenance of the existing setback standards, with the provision that there are, which you'll see later on, there are some requirements for trees in the front and rear yards in order to create more certainty about buffering of vertical elements with landscape. in the front and rear yards in order to create more certainty about buffering of vertical elements with landscape. Do you want to go to the next one? We're suggesting to bring in a buildable area definition, which is basically the total lot area less the setbacks. And to make, in essence, the percentage of, your percentage be based upon the buildable area, which is the area that's a light blue color in the right-hand one versus just have it be across the entire lot. Because what we want to do is acknowledge the setbacks as, in essence, built form resources and not worry as much about the footprint of the building in terms of what's on the remainder of the site. And, and we're doing that in, in essence, to be able to get this additional density in, in the site.
Help me understand that. How, how is that any different than just saying there's these setbacks and the building has to be?
Because the number that you have right now is actually, if you start looking at it mathematically, is more punitive. Meaning it's actually forcing more open space on the lot as a whole than if you do it this way. And we needed to prove that, but we know it works.
Yeah.
We don't have the visual of it here.
So your, your, our design code says you need fifty-three percent of the entire lot area. If you do it this way on your typical seven thousand square foot lot, it's about sixty-six percent of the lot area that gets taken up and it becomes usable space for development. So you're technically increasing the amount of space.
You're technically increasing the amount of ground floor space that you could build on, which means second and third story, et cetera. Which means that the units basically spread out a little bit more and, and there's a little bit less tendency to pop up. I mean, we could show you more exacting diagrams of what it works out to, but I think the diagram that you drew ended up having six hundred and sixty-seven gross square feet. Well, actually, nets.
Nets.
Well, that's not, I don't want to call it net or gross, because those are sort of almost real estate figures and you can play with that. But the unit, the gross square footage of the unit itself less circulation ended up being around six hundred sixty-five square feet as a one-bedroom with four on each level for a seven thousand square foot lot. And your one-bedrooms ended up being like seven fifty or something like that, which is actually large. I mean, we do apartment buildings all the time, and our typical one-bedroom apartment at this point is around four hundred fifty square feet on, in essence, transit infill sites. Okay, you want to go to the next one? We will have better materials the next time we come here to show that, but it was really a math thing of looking at your existing code and saying, if we, if we manipulate this a little bit, you can maintain the setbacks, but in essence, get a little bit more building on the sites. Which then helps you achieve the density that you're supposed to be achieving. So we're saying, buildings may cover a hundred percent of the buildable area. The other thing that's interesting is that as the lots get bigger, the percentage that you can build on gets bigger too. As opposed to just a standard number that's fifty-five or fifty-three percent. And that struck us as being important also because probably based on reading the EPS report and driving around, the sites along Imperial and along the Washington Park area are more subject to seeing bigger buildings than the, on bigger lots than in the Franklin, Whiting or Smoky Hollow area. And the fact that you're doing it this way potentially becomes, how shall one put this, becomes ever more facilitating as the, as the lots get bigger. Because that percentage is, you're gaining a lot of ground floor space, basically. Okay, you want to go to the next one? Height assumptions. Oh, we didn't get time to put the existing on here. But these were the assumptions by which we built our, by which we built our height ideas from. And we assumed fifteen feet for the ground floor. And the reason we assumed that is because we really think that in the long run, people will probably want to accommodate mechanical parking in these things. And you need like fourteen feet clear or so, plus or minus, to be able to do that. And then we basically said that if you're sort of like just doing it in the most flexible way in order to get it to work, that you in essence need eleven feet and eleven feet, you know, as a typical floor-to-floor height, you can squeeze that a bit. But each time you squeeze it, like normally, if you look at from a real estate standpoint, people will say, oh, you gotta be able to achieve nine-foot ceilings. And if you're trying to achieve nine-foot ceilings, you really need fourteen inches or fifteen inches in order to get your wood sandwich to work and do that. So that's why it ends up being around eleven feet. And then what you can see is that we thought that it was important that you're not limited in such a way that you can't do pitched roofs. And so we left an additional ten feet for pitched roofs. These are shown as two-story. This, right? It could be three-story, oh.
It could be three-story.
Right.
I think from the assumptions, I just wanted to show that the.
With the basic assumptions that we built our height limits on. Do you want to go to the next one? So, and, and these are going to keep getting evolving, because they're not quite right yet. But what we're basically showing is the existing on the right, or excuse me, not the existing, the flat roof condition on the left and the pitched roof condition on the right. we're showing it as a modulated third story. I don't know that the form is exactly right in this one, but we're not allowing a hundred percent build out of the top story. So that starts to indicate that. And we're showing sort of a more open space on the ground floor, because we're assuming that that's where the parking is. Okay, you want to go to the next one?
And, and what if?
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, what if that one qualified for a density bonus of a fourth floor? What condition happens there?
Again, you wouldn't, you, you'd have to build, I think the way we've written it right now is seventy percent of the floor below it, right?
Okay.
So you have three whole stories or a fourth story?
Okay, so same, same condition, just one story.
Yeah, so we've, we've written it so that the top floor is always modulated from the floors below, regardless of whether it's, whatever ends up being the top floor definition. Want to go to the next one? Okay, so, and there it is, the next one. The top story of all new developments must be a maximum of seventy percent of the floor immediately below. And, and this is a bit crude, but obviously what it shows is, well, you can modulate that any way you want. You can shift it towards the front, you can shift it towards the back. You, it's funny, we had a meeting last night or two nights ago in a, in a community in Los Angeles where they sort of had the normal concern about apartment buildings overlooking, you know, R-one single family and, and the building that we designed had no balconies nor any open space on the roof overlooking the neighborhood. And we touted that as being a feature of the project. And so we could go further in this and say that, well, if, whatever open space, if it's like usable for the tenants, you can't have balconies overlooking the rear yards, if that becomes important. But then again, it becomes complicated, because in the Franklin Whiting neighborhood, it's already a multifamily neighborhood for the most part. So I'm not sure how effective that would be. But the main thing we wanted to do was get out the idea that the top floor has to modulate in some way. Okay, you want to go to the next one? And then this is that notion that you might be able to build a couple of extra dwelling units on top of an extra, on top of an existing building. And I recognize that there are costs associated with that. But it seems to me that there'd be people who would want to do that. Because where else do you buy land and do something nutty? So, and then, and then we said, no additional parking is required for those added units, because quite honestly, if you require additional parking for those units, you've made it infeasible to begin with, because you've already got, you're probably already maxed out in terms of parking on those lots for the most part. Okay, do you want to go to the next one? In terms of the mixed use, I think the big thing here is that we're showing it as the potential for an additional eleven feet for bonusing. And in order to preserve the integral, or the potential that someone would actually build a mixed use, use, vertical mixed use on the ground story, in the mixed use overlay, we would allow an additional eleven feet for a commercial use, if they provided a bona fide commercial use in the building. And the reason we're doing that is because it becomes a little bit difficult. If you don't, if you don't relax it, you're not going to get the housing. But maybe that's the easiest way to describe it. Like if we, if we keep the height limit exactly the same and there is an economic bona fide use for that ground floor level, if you, if you keep the height limit exactly at the forty-seven and forty-one feet, then you've in essence just, you're forcing a choice between the commercial use versus the residential use. And the idea is to get a mixed use. And, and in general, mixed use is not that, is not that easy to achieve. Almost everybody always asks for more when you try to get them to do vertical mixed use. And actually, even horizontal mixed use, it's, it's hard. And the developers who build residential aren't necessarily the ones who build mixed use buildings. And the commercial developers aren't the ones who build mixed use buildings. So it's kind of a rare beast to a certain extent.
So, I, I, just so I understand, so if seventy-five dwelling, dwelling units per acre for mixed use is the, is what the state is saying, which is a higher density than R-three, right? So, the only way to get more density, because in a mixed use, chances are the ground floor is going to be retail or commercial or some, something, not dwelling units, right? Or, you know, less dwelling units. So you gotta go up.
You, you have to go up, or the other, if you allow a one-hundred percent residential building on a mixed use site, you don't have to go up.
So how is that become?
But if you.
How is that mixed use then, if it's a hundred percent residential?
But the question is, is in your mixed use area, if somebody came in and wanted to build a one-hundred percent residential building, would you allow that?
Not today. And if, but if it met affordability requirements, we would have to.
But in that case, you would be, have the additional eleven feet for the bonus one-hundred percent residential building. But if that same person wanted to still build commercial, you'd give them that floor to do the commercial component. And I think that's what we are suggesting here.
To picture it, Pacific Coast Commons is probably the closest and best example today, especially in light of the difficulty in tenancy and commercial space. They had two hundred and fifty-six residential units and I think thirteen thousand square feet of retail. And that whole project site. And so I think that's a, a good indication of probably the market for commercial ground floor, retail or commercial space in, in, in general. And so, we'll, we'll likely see projects with a lot more residential and a lot less.
Do we have a minimum requirement of commercial in those?
I, I don't believe so. And, and Pacific Coast Commons is the first project to ever effectuate some true actual mixed use development in El Segundo. Our, our mixed use zones don't allow residential here, which is ironic. But it's the only project that does, and, and that's the ratio. It's roughly thirteen or fifteen thousand square feet of commercial space and, and a few hundred or a couple hundred residential units with the twelve percent affordability.
Does this exercise, think about the commercial parking requirement in those? Or that's just standard with what our commercial parking code is?
So far, it's just standard with what your commercial parking code is. We haven't thought about that.
But, but with that, the, the commercial parking code does allow us to do a little bit of gymnastics like we did with Pacific Coast Commons and, and do some sort of shared parking analysis. And so there's some flexibility there. With the larger sites, you know, there's flexibility for either automated puzzle parking. You know, there's some other tools that can be used. The, the purpose of this exercise is really to focus on the residential component.
There are all sorts of complexities with a vertical mixed use building. And, and I think, I think that an easy way of thinking about it is, is that typically you end up with building a podium. And then the question is, is what do you put in the podium? And a lot of the time, you put a certain amount of commercial use in it, but most of it ends up being parking for the residential component. And, and if you take that, if you don't accommodate that height for that first level, in, in terms of the flexibility of your height limits, it just makes it less likely that you'll get a mixed use building. Or, or you'll get, people will come in and say, we can build the mixed use, but the, the commercial, but we don't want to do the residential, because you're not allowing us to get enough residential or vice versa. So it's almost like you have to be flexible in that, or else it becomes difficult. Okay, do you want to go to the next one? Okay, in terms of, look, we're suggesting that no plane of a street-facing building wall shall exceed thirty-six feet in height or length without at least a two-set foot offset for a minimum length of six feet of the wall plane. That is a little bit different than what you require right now, which I think is twenty-four feet. Is that correct? And the reason we did that was based on a two-bedroom apartment with no balcony is basically in twelve-foot plus or minus modules. It can go down to around ten feet, but not much less, and it can get as big as fourteen, fifteen feet. And what we, we saw your current code, the way it was written, is actually making it difficult to build two-bedroom, simple two-bedroom apartments. So, so we thought that that was just, we could call it a relaxation of the code to just accommodate more housing or make it easier. But we also wanted to put some exceptions in there and say, well, maybe you don't need to modulate if the buildings have recessed windows or they have an additional three feet of landscape setback, which would mean particularly in the Imperial and Franklin Park areas, we'd be going from five feet to eight feet, which would allow more and better landscaping or trees, or buildings that utilize two or more materials. We could clearly develop this, but what we were trying to do was to create more ways that somebody could create a building that was considered modulated and in essence, introduce landscape to do that. Okay, you want, which would end up with a bigger setback, obviously. So it's a trade-off. This is the standard, potential standard that I referred to earlier, where we're saying that the maximum frontage is a hundred and forty feet. Your typical parcels, if they're, well, we've seen them as small as forty feet, but we see a lot of fifty-foot dimensions too. So if somebody consolidated three feet and they had the side yard setbacks, they'd have a maximum length of a hundred and forty feet, basically. But in thinking about it, we decided that in the Franklin Whiting and Smoky Hollow adjacent neighborhoods, it wasn't enough to just say you could go a hundred and forty feet and then had to do some sort of major modulation, like a deep recess or something. We wanted it to be a completely different building. And so that's where the twenty-five feet is coming in.
So that's six lots, essentially.
Yes.
Six fifty-foot lots, right? And wouldn't there be driveways and things like that that also might?
Well, the way, when we talked about it, the way we were thinking about it is that what if somebody ended up, in the current condition, if somebody ended up being able to somehow consolidate lots on both sides of an alley? And they went three and three, they would end up with two buildings that in essence had a twenty-five foot zone plus or minus running between them. So we're being silent on roads and stuff like that. They'd have to still solve fire department things. But in essence, we were saying, that condition struck us as being about as intense as you'd ever want to get in those neighborhoods. Maybe even, you know, I'd be worried that that would happen even too often. But, I mean, we could, we could dial it back even more if you wanted us to. But this was kind of what we thought would be our level of comfort for the maximum you'd ever want to see, based on what we were given as a challenge.
Is there precedent in El Segundo of a hundred and forty-foot long buildings right now? I mean, is that massing out there?
Definitely sites that have consolidated more than three lots, that's for sure, in Franklin Whiting.
But resulted in, in development of this scale, probably not. I mean, I looked at Eduardo and Jasmine, who've been there longer than I have. I, I don't, I don't think we've seen this scale.
Well, you definitely have buildings that are this scale or bigger along Imperial.
Oh, you're right. Those are probably nineteen eighties era.
And we're not limiting that, I mean, in that neighborhood, we're not, we're silent. We're only saying this is for Franklin and, and the other ones. So that's why it's not applicable for Imperial and Washington.
Got you.
I mean, those are big buildings.
There are some big buildings. There are also still some, you know, individual lots out there where you see buildings that were built, you know, in the forties or fifties or something like that, sixties, that are one story.
Yeah, right.
What do you think? Okay. Well, Eduardo knows a lot, so we trust. Well, Eduardo knows a lot, so we trust him when he gives us comments. Do you want to go to the next one? Okay, here we talk about the parking on the left, so basically one space per bedroom. So right now, you'd be, if you started building three-bedroom units, four-bedroom units, I mean, in a weird kind of way, we're kind of signaling to people to build smaller units by making it one car per bedroom because they start minimizing the yield of larger units. And I don't know whether that's a good thing or not from your perspective, but if the goal was to encourage housing that still met the character, but you got a bit more, in some ways by having the one space per bedroom requirement, you're kind of telling people to build one bedrooms and studios, given the other constraints that are out there. Because if you're telling, because they could build very large units that were three, four-bedroom units, but they would have to really want them in some way. Now, in the deep dark past, we worked in West Hollywood and they were very, very upset because people were buying basically lots that had single-family houses on them, but were zoned R three or some, the equivalent of R three. And they were building super expensive, in essence, two-floor, two floors with a ground floor that had parking and making like super luxurious one-bedroom, uh, excuse me, three-bedroom apartments on them that would be like three thousand square feet each, one over the other with like all sorts of amenities. And, and they were approaching it from a, the standpoint of, well, you know, it's great that people want to live in our community, but what about, um, you know, we're, we're displacing people? Because they would tear down a, a small little six-unit building to build these luxury things. And so they, they played around, we played around with them, um, with average unit sizes and things like that. I think, you know, in a weird way, the parking requirement is kind of doing the same thing. It's saying, fine, if you really want to build a big unit, that's fine, but you're not going to come close to realizing the yield, given the height limit and given the constraints of the site. But that's something we can certainly visit.
So for example, when I first moved to, to El Segundo, we bought a townhouse, three-bedroom townhouse, it had two, two-car garage. Uh, it's the only way we could afford to get into El Segundo. In this scenario, that three-bedroom would need three parking spots, is that right? And so the developer would not be able to, that probably wouldn't have penciled.
They would, I mean, I, I wish we had the diagrams, maybe we could find them and get them up on the computer somehow. I think the thing that's interesting about it is, um, the diagrams that we drew, if you were to think about it as four, six-hundred-and-fifty-square-foot one-bedroom units. It would be two twelve-hundred-square-foot units. Or one, one-bedroom unit and like say an eighteen-hundred-square-foot three-bedroom unit. And they all are going to, they're all going to start yielding the same number of cars. But the thing that's interesting is, except in one case in my experience, and though this could be turning upside down now, generally developers make more money per square foot on smaller units. Not always, there are certain cases where that doesn't work.
Is like what are we, then this is first off, to trying to achieve overall with the R three and the mix, and the overlay zone?
Exactly.
Is it simply more units or is it like, or is it a greater diversity of units? So I'm, I'm curious to hear what everybody else's reaction. My reaction is I'm hesitant to push development of just studios and ones.
Understood.
And limit, I mean, I, I think there will be R three lots that lend themselves to family living and it feels like maybe we're pushing that out if we require a space per bedroom.
Well, that is a good question, what is, yeah. Developers that would buy would, as you say, it would pencil out for them whether these, these are going to be sold or leased or rented. And the idea is to create more housing.
Well, I, I think Commissioner Keldorf is asking the great question that we really do need direction from you on because in the, in the end, we're not telling, we don't want to tell you what, what is the right policy for El Segundo. It's almost more like saying, we've put this forward. It is based upon the idea that in this mixed use overlay zone, not the R three zone, not the single-family zone, not your downtown specific plan area, but in this mixed use overlay zone, the objective that we're putting out there is how do we achieve sixty-seven dwelling units to the acre or in the base condition, around forty-three or whatever that number was. And in that case, we're, we're putting forth as a thesis, if you will, that, well, here we want to send some signals to people to build more units, but do it in a way that still manages to fit within some definition with objective design standards of El Segundo character. I know for sure that if we talked about this on a citywide level, the question that you just put forward is the essential question. So, but if you tell us to move it towards more flexibility for different types of housing types in this area, one of the ways to do that is to sort of say, okay, anything more than two bedrooms, you still have just two cars per unit or something like that. But, but it's still going to be difficult because you only have so much practical space to park unless you start building, you know, automated parking, not automated lifts or something. But that's a totally great, we need that direction.
Well, and do we, do any of us know the right answer to that? In a mixed use zone, what, what's the right mix of families? What's the right mix of, of housing type, you know? I, I don't know the answer to that.
For me, it's more a question of like, what's the unintended consequence of us limiting something like that? Than are we basically telling, you know, developers and people that you're only essentially going to build studios and ones because that's what's gonna?
Well, generally speaking, and, and this is anecdotal as opposed to scientific, but based on everything that I've seen and, and given the amount of apartment stuff that we're doing or that I'm doing in two different companies, unless a city has explicit policies that in some way incentivize the production of family units, i.e. units that are larger than two bedrooms in size, no one's going to build them. Like City of San Diego, if you provide ten percent three-bedroom units, they will in their complete community plans basically allow you to pretty much waive any city standard that you want. Um, and that's about the most aggressive one that I've seen. City of Los Angeles, when they had a redevelopment agency, they tried to encourage family units and it was always very, very difficult from an economic planning standpoint. Our clients, for the most part, only want to build one-bedrooms and sometimes two-bedroom units. There are larger units with more bedrooms being built near university campuses where they can rent rooms by the room. But for the most part, it's very difficult to get folks to do that in urban infill sites.
On a rental basis, right? I mean, is the assumption that very few, if any of these, will actually be for sale condos?
Yeah, I, and in our conversations with the state, um, and as we've talked about it, at least in my head, I don't think anybody's overtly said it, but I, I believe the underlying assumption is that this is predominantly rental property.
So it's not that there's not demand for more bedroom units, it's just, it's not practical for the developers to build those things, is that?
I think, I think it, I think with the exception of the sort of that kind of weird shared housing boom that has taken place over the last five years, that generally speaking, they don't make as much money on larger units per square foot. And so there's a huge economic incentive not to do it. And, and generally when cities want family housing, they have to sort of work hard to incentivize it in one form or another.
So I think you, you intimated that the City of San Diego wanted family housing.
Yeah.
Larger, so they were doing whatever they could, but yet the developers were not building them.
Well, in the complete communities program, we're putting in three-bedroom units precisely because we can waive other development standards. So it's, it.
So there's a market for it.
Um, yeah, because.
From a city, from a city standpoint, from their desire.
There was definitely a financial incentive that was created with that program to dump the three-bedroom units in there because it allowed, it, you could waive so many other requirements that were difficult to achieve with higher density housing that it made it worthwhile to do. I mean, they were, they're, I, I, that's a whole study session in and of itself, that program. It is the most aggressive housing program in the state, it's pretty amazing. And, and people, it's like, you know, tasty bait on a hook, they've definitely, they're, they're generating thousands of housing units from it. But it's a completely different city, it's got a transit system. It, you know, has what, a million people in it? I mean, it's just a completely different circumstance than here. Okay, so we are suggesting a slight difference to the parking standard. A, eight and a half by eighteen feet works, it is used in all sorts of other cities. And, and B, it gives you a little bit more flexibility in terms of being able to squeeze all these cars in these smaller spaces. That's a very nominal thing. We are suggesting that tandem and mechanical parking be allowed, um, within the overlay zone. And, and while it says they're permitted for two-plus bedroom units, I, I would sort of say that parking lifts can be safely operated for one-bedrooms as well, so I, I would, if you're going to allow it, I don't know that we have to absolutely say it's for two bedrooms, but tandem typically, you would want to have it be associated with a two-bedroom unit. And I fully understand what the difficulties of tandem parking are. I have a nice house with a nice driveway and a garage, but we still tandem park in our driveway and I have to like encourage my daughter or my wife to move their car for me. And sometimes they do and sometimes they don't get it.
And John, in your experience, do you, if you go to the smaller garage, obviously people use their garage to store stuff besides cars. Does the smaller garage actually just encourage them, it's like, oh, well, I can't fit my car and all these boxes here, I'm just going to put the car on the street and the garage still just becomes a storage unit?
Well, in multifamily projects, you generally don't see people storing stuff in the garages other than cars.
Because it's common.
Because it's common. Some cities do in fact have storage requirements per, on a per-unit basis for multifamily buildings, we haven't proposed that here and as far as I know, you don't have that in El Segundo, but Anaheim definitely does, San Diego does, Los Angeles does not. So, you know, that generally came out of, um, reaction to bad apartment building design in the nineteen-seventies and eighties where cities that were very afraid of multifamily housing started imposing all sorts of requirements on them to try to improve the quality of them. I, you know, Ana, not Anaheim, Santa Ana, the storage requirement was clearly instituted as a way of discouraging people from building multifamily housing when it was done. I mean, they, I mean, the, the average unit sizes was another strategy that was used to sort of try to supposedly ensure the quality of units. But I think that the lesson learned was that just because people build in eight-hundred-fifty-square-foot unit doesn't mean that it ends up being, you know, a quality unit per se, there are a lot of factors at work.
For, for those parking dimensions, are you also considering ADA?
The ADA requirement is basically separate from that. It would still require that, um, you know, if it's an eight-car garage, that eight-car garage that we assumed had built into it, um, one van parking space and one EVCS or electric vehicle charging station that in essence is an ADA space, they're an accessible space as well. So the number that we had, do you have it?
I have it, but I'm going to share.
You would email it to Michael.
Email it to Eduardo.
The, the number that, I mean, we, you know, we're just diagramming, we're not designing buildings, but when we did it, we did say, we did take into account that in, on a small lot, you would need to have a minimum of two spaces that in essence were accessible.
Because those are larger than.
Yes, the van space is seventeen feet by eighteen.
It's almost double, right.
And the first electric vehicle charging station space is either fourteen feet or seventeen feet, depending upon how it's done.
Well, while we're looking that up, um, I just want to confirm something I think I'm hearing from the commission. We haven't had sort of a poll of straws or, or nodding heads yet, but, um, as it relates to the unit size and unit mix, uh, I, I think I'm hearing there's a preference for incentivizing or creating a space for a more, a better diversity of, of stock, you know, whether it's studio, one-bedroom or two-plus bedroom. And there, there may be appetite to utilize the parking standards to help disincentivize a heavy reliance on studio or one-bedroom apartments. Um, or, or, and I guess it could be an and, um, requiring a mixture of units, instituting a ten percent policy or, or some sort of, uh, standard that requires a certain percentage of unit distribution. Is that something that the commission is interested in exploring further? Uh, or at least, because there might be other ways we can do it, is there at least consensus that we want to work towards not incentivizing just studio one-bedrooms?
Go ahead. No, I, I think that's the better way to say it, you know? I don't know what the right mix is, I'd be reluctant to say ten percent three-bedroom, um, or, you know, two-bedroom plus. But I think Michelle said, um, better earlier and that was, what can we do to, to keep from preventing those things from, from being developed?
Right.
You know, what, what's the mechanism to, to not discourage that sort of development?
Yeah, I would say that, that's it. I do agree, the likelihood that you're going to have those larger unit sizes is not there, but I think if you require one parking space per bedroom, we'll never see them.
I think you're right, so that's one way of doing it.
All right, it's just a screen grab, so I apologize for not looking at the nest.
Okay, why don't you hit the next slide, because we're almost at the end of this anyway. Oh, he has to, Eduardo has to hit the next slide, okay.
I mean, maybe Ken.
Yeah. Okay, another thing, and this may be controversial, but I, and I, I will fully admit, I am proposing this from the standpoint of an architect as opposed to a planner. We are proposing that these sort of gray standards of common open space and private open space in the R three overlay zone not be required, but that you still require fifty square feet per dwelling unit for buildings greater than twenty-one units. And the reason we're proposing that is because increasingly, I'm of the opinion, perhaps wrong, and I'm happy to be slapped down on this, that you're building on infill sites. The s- infrastructure of the city is the infrastructure of the city. The idea that you're creating good open space by forcing developers to build a hundred fifty square feet per dwelling unit on the site is actually, I think, problematic because it's making them harder to achieve the yields of housing units that you want. And the open space that results is underutilized, poorly maintained a lot of the time. And I at least would prefer to see the open space policies be dealt with citywide. And in this particular case, you've got pretty good open space resources directly across the street from where most of this housing will probably get built. So that was why we suggested it, but I fully know that it might not be a popular idea.
Had we not increased our development impact fees, I would have more issue with that, I think. I mean, developers were not having to pay into a lot of those public resources.
Because?
We just hadn't increased our fees for a very long time.
Yeah, I recognize that that gets to be a complicated subject. I, I feel that if development impact fees are, how does one put this, if there's a proper nexus in developer impact fees, developers would always rather pay those. Just today, we were having a conversation about trees. The City of Los Angeles requires that there be one tree planted for every four units that you build. When you're building on infill development sites, you end up having to place those trees on rooftop decks. It's extremely, it's, I shouldn't say extremely, it is totally doable. But it's very heavy, it adds a lot of cost to the building, if particularly if they're up on the roof. up on the roof. It's not that easy to put them up there, and unless you are a lug, building true luxury housing, it's not maintained, and the trees go away anyway, and then the city has nothing for it. And I was having a conversation with some people who do policy work in the city, and say, why don't you just have a more aggressive in-lu program? Just figure out what, you know, how many trees you want, and put it into a fund, and just go plant the trees, and actually, why don't you maintain them? You know? And that would be more valuable to the city in the long run than, you know, these trees that basically, you know, I can't tell you how many times I'm told, make them small decorative trees, you know? If the city, you know, the landscape architect will tell you that you can get away with twenty cubic feet per foot and make them grow, but if you look at what proper standards are, they should have a hundred cubic feet of soil to grow. So I don't know, I, I, I sort of feel like you're asking, people are trying to get something that it would be better not to ask for, and just get more trees on the streets or something. But that's, that's where this is coming from.
Makes sense.
Do you want to hit the next one? What we are saying, however, in these setback areas, at the front and rear yards, we would like basically to see at least one deciduous or evergreen tree planted for every twenty-five feet of street drainage on the private property, and a minimum of fifty feet, percent soft scape, and a maximum fifty percent hard scape, and that artificial turf and synthetic grass be allowed in the side and rear yards only, in order to basically improve the quality of the front yards even when they're narrower. And if you think back to what we said before, in terms of the modulation, we're saying, well, maybe you should relax the modulation, because if somebody gives you a bigger front yard setback, which would allow the trees to be more viable. And then utilize drought-tolerant plants, and then, is that the last one?
I think that would be.
Yeah, why don't we go back and, and, and let's put the math slide up that we have, and then we can do the conclusion.
I just said the screen.
Yeah.
With those diagrams.
Yeah, 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 let's look at the screen, green grab real quick.
Anything fancy? And it also assumes a ninety percent top-floor setback or third.
Okay, this was sort of, this is a version of the diagram that we've been playing with on a typical fifty-foot-wide lot that's a hundred-and-forty feet deep, is that correct?
Um, yeah.
Hundred-and-forty feet deep. And, and what you can see here is that on the ground floor, you can see that we've got two, in essence, accessible spaces at the end.
So parking is the second one over.
You would have accessible over here, and then they should walk here.
And the driveway is assumed coming in, well, the driveway could come in from an alley, or it could come in from the front. It would, then that would just flip to the backside. We've got two stairs at either end, one, two, we have an elevator. We have sort of a bunch of space up front that could be, some of it could be utility, a small lobby, a mailroom, whatever. And then you get up to the next floor, and we end up with these kind of like boxes that are not perfect in by any means, they actually represent some challenges when those sites are proportioned like this. But, you know, I know that we could design it, and I know people do design it. And then the third floor, basically, or the third diagram on the right starts to show what happens when they become bigger units. So, we've had probably what, a dozen of these, and we have them both, and we use these as a way, because what Ami did, which actually was also kind of cool, was we've got these spreadsheets also that basically describe the math of these projects, so we're playing with those as well in terms of the parking ratios.
In that diagram, the, the one on the right, those are the two, the two bedrooms, supposedly?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, there's some problems with this diagram in the sense that you have a exit balcony with, with openings in it, which would need to be protected openings, and so there are, there are some challenges in how you build it, but on a narrow lot, it, it, it actually is a little bit challenging to build these vertical apartment buildings. But people do it all the time, so.
So, in this scenario, would, would that be underparked? If you did one?
No, because if they're all one-bedrooms, you have eight cars.
I see that, but if you go to the seven-ninety, or are you assuming the seven-ninety are also one-bedroom?
We would assume in this situation that that would have to accommodate some sort of mechanical parking, because you're not be able to up there eleven feet as there.
Yeah.
Obviously only eight parking spots.
Gotcha, okay.
So you either reduce the parking minimum, or you would increase.
So it's a weird sort of balancing act that's based upon the constraint of whether or not you start investing either in a second level of parking, which quite honestly, you're not going to yield that many more cars, because the ramp itself, even if you just go half a level down, is like twenty-five, thirty feet deep with landings on, or twenty-five to thirty feet long with landings on both sides. So you're starting to creep further into the site even as you're spending more money to build a second layer of concrete. What we haven't done yet, but I think we will have for the next presentation, is consolidated lot versions of this. But we started with the most constrained site, because we always know that that's where the biggest challenges in terms of making something work. If you start to consolidate lots, it starts to relax and get a little bit easier to do. Okay, you want to go to the summary slide, and then we can take your arrows and barbs?
No arrows.
Okay, so if I was to summarize this, I'd say that what we're really trying to do is we're trying to adjust for density, the existing R-three standards, that in doing that, we've accepted a higher density base, which would then translate to, with bonusing, an even higher density base. We're suggesting that the open space and buildable area standards be relaxed to a cer- to a certain degree to facilitate production of housing to achieve the RENA requirements without having to automatically accept taller buildings in the base condition. We've tried to, from a diagramming and math standpoint, we think you can make the overlay work with a three-story, with a three-story height constraint. And we've, we've relaxed the height a little bit to acknowledge the fact that to get the parking to work, you may need either a higher floor or a little bit more room for the parking. We think in three stories, you know, your unit types will generally range, when all is said and done, between six-hundred-and-fifty and seven-hundred-and-fifty square feet per unit. They can go smaller than that, but the buildings will be smaller, which isn't necessarily a bad thing, but they'd be three stories. And that all-density bonus projects on small sites would require either a second level of parking or automated parking to meet parking minimums if we proceed down the route that we're talking. And, and, and so that's kind of the big picture summary of it. Really, the conclusion is, we think we can do it in three stories.
Thank you, I think that's incredibly thorough, so it definitely appeals to my love of anecdotal and mathematical equations. Somehow you made those two things come together. I appreciate it. I would love to hear from everybody else about the parking primarily. I mean, not to put you on the spot on your.
No, no, but it's, it's always about the parking.
Yeah.
I mean, it's interesting that we, I mean, I don't know what direction we want to go, if we want to go for the diverse group of studies, one bedroom and two bedrooms, or just promote the small units which looks like it does what the developers will prefer from the economic perspective. So I think we need to decide or agree what we like to promote.
How do you, how do you, what do you, what do you, what are your thoughts? How do you actually prevent all of that promoting of the smaller units? How do you do that? How do you ride it?
We control.
With reference to parking, so that it encourages?
I would be okay with capping parking at, you know, a maximum of two stalls per unit, that's my personal opinion.
Regardless of it's a studio.
Well, meaning, you know, it would have to be a minimum of one space for a studio, one for a one, two for a two, but then at that point, I don't know that we would need one space per bedroom, I'm open to discuss that. But I'm al-, and I'm also open to the idea of putting something in there that does, I'm not, I'm less interested in a project that's entirely studios, right? I mean, we have this idea of micro-units, we have some other ways to accommodate that, and I'm a big, I'm okay with density, so it's not that, it's just, I don't know who that's, if that's going to be serving the need that we as a community have addressed or want to address that we have. Maybe we put, do you put minimum thresholds in there for a mix of studios, ones and twos? I hadn't thought about it before.
Percentages, or, yeah, I mean, how does that get, typically get written?
Yeah, yeah, I've seen it primarily as percentages.
Yeah.
Based on unit size, square-footage unit size, not necessarily bedrooms. Generally, you could do it by bedrooms.
You can do it by having an average unit size. So basically, what you do is, let's say a studio is four-hundred square feet, you set your average unit size to be six-hundred square feet, and that in essence keeps somebody from building all studios.
So I, that's extremely enticing, I, mainly because, and it goes back to a thought I had when Commissioner Heschler was, was talking about regu-, you know, establishing some standards, and I thought, we always walk this fine line of establishing standards to, to see, or to, to implement what we, what we want to see in the community, but, but that doesn't always align with the market, right? The market tends to drive what ends up getting developed, and we end up fighting with developers about that on, on a constant basis. And something like this allows you to achieve the desired result of, of some form of unit mix, while allowing the market to, to dictate that developer choosing what that unit mix is to, to their benefit. And so I, I think it's an interesting proposition.
I, I think it's definitely something that we could look into. I know different cities have tried to do it, I know cities have done it. I think it's complicated, because the market changes over time, and exactly what Michael is talking about starts to happen at times. I, I don't know, well, the one thing I would say about it is that I keep coming back, well, this is the mixed-use overlay district, we're not talking citywide. You know, you still have your R-three. People can do, in the R-three, this. So I don't know, I, 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 I'm perfectly happy to do an average unit size. I've done it before, it's, we did it in West Hollywood, I think it won awards from the American Planning Association, and they changed it after about four or five years to a different average based upon the market changing.
And did it go up, or did it go down, the average, down?
I can't remember right now, but what we were specifically trying to do in that particular case was to prevent all large apartments that had very few bedrooms, and to get developers to build more units to accommodate actually single-resident households, which is what they perceived their demographic to be, in which because the city had gotten so desirable, nobody was building smaller units. And so that was the purpose of the average unit size, and then they sort of changed gears about five years after we did it, and they changed it again.
And how was that one parked? At that average?
Well, at that time, there really weren't the type of, this was around two thousand and ten, or something like that, and, and at that time, there weren't the types of density bonus programs that there are now. But if we were to go down that route, we'd have to do a little bit of studying to see what best practices are, because I'm not a hundred percent sure. I mean, I do know that when we did the West Hollywood project, they did not do any real substantive economic analysis as part of it. Normally, you would say that if you want to really get into that question and avoid the sort of circumstance that Michael is describing, you'd want to do some sort of more understanding, or have some more understandings of what the demographic trends for like housing might be in this community, and, and what's the unfulfilled need within the community, and what type of a, what type of a housing program are you trying to?
A segmentation study, essentially, yeah.
You've said it perfectly, that's exactly.
We weren't hired to do that, so.
That's a little off school, I would imagine.
So I mean, you know, we know how to, like, bring in somebody to help us do it, but it would take time, and, and, and it would be an additional, you know, type of exercise. But it would be, if you really wanted to go down that route, that's what you would do.
I, I don't know, I, I, my concern was if you start saying, if you start equating parking to bedrooms, immediately a three-bedroom place is kind of out of the question. But if you said, all right, let's cap it, let's do one spot per bedroom, but cap it at two, then at least, you know, someone could build something else without having to worry about having to, to, to supply a lot more parking. That's kind of where my head's at, but.
I would agree with that.
I'd agree with that as well, although I do find it interesting, the percentage of the, or the average unit percentage, I just, I wonder which, which is a better, which is a better option.
I, I also agree with the concept of one bedroom, one car, max two.
Do we have another pot of money to explore that?
Well, well, I mean, it, it, it goes in tandem with, with what we've actually asked them to do. I mean, you know, so it's, it's, it's land use, it's trying to figure out who, you know, who, who, what's the demographic? What are, what are we trying to accomplish?
Oh, we have a whole housing element that is supposed to tell us that, and we can, we can start there. I, and I think if I understand the average range, John, that you provided when you said, I think it was six-hundred-and-fifty to seven-hundred-and-something unit size, am, am I assuming correctly that you're just taking the built form envelope and dividing that by the number of units?
We were struggling with exactly the question that you're struggling with, because what we heard at the last study session, well, we've heard two different things. When we started the exercise with Michael, Michael told us, there's, there will be concern about parking. There'll be concern that there won't be enough parking in the buildings, and it will overwhelm the character of the community, because people will be spilling out onto the streets. And, and then we heard at the first meeting with you, we, we, we didn't hear that concern expressed as much as we heard that you wanted to make sure there was adequate parking for the units. Because I think my knee-jerk response was to Michael, when we first talked about it, you should require point, you should require one car per unit, because if anybody invokes the density bonus law, they get that automatically. And we also had already done some of the diagramming, and we knew that the eight units was more or less what you were going to get on a small site, you know, maybe you'd get seven cars, maybe you'd get eight, but you, it would be really tough to get nine cars without going anywhere. The six-sixty-five was simply what was left over. We didn't try to design the building per se. You could design that building, you might end up with a little bit less than six-sixty-five, but, you know, maybe the six-sixty-five incorporates a little outdoor space or something like that, so the unit is actually, you know, five-hundred or some, five-fifty. But it, it was clear to us, we struggled with this, because it was like, where do we put the cars if we do this? And, and so, and, and even though it's easy to say, well, we'll do automated parking, or, excuse me, parking lifts, that's still very unusual. I mean, there are definitely projects, again, in San Diego, you see a lot more of it than you do in Los Angeles, but people are trying to do it in Los Angeles too, in small projects. But it adds another, probably eight to ten thousand dollars to, to put in a parking lift.
It's gotta be more than that.
No, parking lifts, you can buy them for about that, we've priced them. There are some, there are some other costs that are associated with it, but we've definitely, like, they take up a little bit more room, so like, if we showed eight cars there, you might only achieve seven, but you'd have parking lifts, because they need a little bit more width, and you'd have to work with your fire department to make sure your fire department is comfortable with it.
Good.
You know, things like that.
Do you need more height, more clearance?
You need about fourteen feet, I mean, I've seen them, I've seen certain systems that go down, you can also dig them down into the ground and do it that way. The biggest difficulty with them on very small lots is when the fire department starts saying that they want three feet behind them. Like, they imagine a situation where they're going to want to fight the, the engine side as well as the backside, and all of a sudden... the engine side as well as the backside and all of a sudden, you know, like your dimensions become very, very difficult to achieve on, on a tight site. But they're definitely done. They definitely can be done.
Do they need to be operated by a parking attendant, by a parking person or anyone?
No, at this point, at this point, they're good enough that you can pretty much place them and and people can operate them. In San Diego, they don't have a problem with that. In Los Angeles, it's sort of fifty fifty.
Um, can I shift gears and talk setbacks?
Absolutely.
Sorry. Um, so I, I was curious. So on Imperial, yes, there's the nice green space in front. The other one's got the dog park. Um, I, it's hard for me to imagine just a five foot setback on those things. And is that really better? A tighter setback with less landscaping, because there's just less room for it. Is that really better than going taller? And, you know, if you're already in an area where it's already R three, you got neighbors, you're not looking down on people's houses. You know, what's the downside of going tall? People say, you're blocking my view. Well, you're blocking the view of the airport. You know, there's, there's, it's sort of a different animal there. And I'm just wondering, is it, would you, if you were walking down that street, walking your dog to the dog park, would you really notice a, a, a fourth story versus a unit, a big mass right there next to the sidewalk? And I feel like that massing, it, it would be a little heavy handed. But I, you know, I totally got how you got to the, the larger footprint, the, the larger FAR.
I think we were really nervous that if we proposed four stories as a base, people would say to us, how could you possibly do that? But I don't disagree with the trade off that you're describing.
Well, modulation helps. I mean, having those setbacks on the roof actually helps because now it doesn't feel like four stories anymore, at least from the pedestrian level.
If that was the direction that we got, I have no problem with that.
I think that's a great point. We're talking just along Imperial though, or in general.
Well, that would be, that's what.
That's where the setback, yeah.
That's where you've got the five foot setback. Yeah. I, I mean, that feels really snug to me.
It's snug?
Yeah.
I like that idea.
Yeah.
So thi- this is why we're here. So, you know, probably two or three meetings ago, the, the feedback without having diagrams and really understanding form and massing was prioritize height, low, keeping, maintaining low level height over anything else. Uh, there were some anecdotes, but, but that was the, the, the drive behind, behind some of this. And so I think I was the one that said, uh, well, are you sure we can't squeeze this in three stories?
The other thing is, is that if we set our base condition at four stories, a bonus project is five stories.
Right.
So, uh, so it's.
So it's one or the other. You either have to go to the street.
I, I think, you know, I think it's like, what is right for your community? In the end. I mean, I can tell you that I'm not, I wouldn't be, for exactly the same reasons that you expressed, I wouldn't worry about five stories at all there. It's facing the airport. You know, the taller the buildings are there, the more of a theoretical sound buffer they create for the community to the, to the sound. Might actually be kind of fun to live on the fifth story and look at the airport.
Have you been to that AC hotel, the bar? It's awesome. You look out over the airport. It's like, that'd be a pretty cool uh, penthouse apartment.
And so I, I don't disagree at all with where you're coming from. And I would say, hey, if you're going to do that, you probably should have a bigger setback in front so that you can have bigger trees. It makes total sense to me. I think what Michael said is accurate. We were kind of in our first conversations, the, the, the thought was that if we just came in and said things like that, that there would be, you know, a lot of upset because height was such an important issue to folks. And, and, and I can understand that. And I live with somebody who basically says you should never have to build a building taller than three stories in the entire Los Angeles basin.
Yeah.
So I mean, it's not like, that's unusual.
There is that. And when, once you do it and it happens over there in Imperial and it's allowed, then where's, where do you stop? Then other people throughout the city, I'm just, I'm being devil, playing devil's advocate.
Well, that's the reason there's, there's overlays. That's the reason that there are zones that are, you know.
That was the whole neighborhood, by neighborhood approach too.
So that helps.
But they're, yeah.
I mean, you could, you could propose that type of an idea for Imperial and/or Washington and say that absolutely you can't do that in Franklin Whiting and um, the Smoky Hollow adjacent areas.
I feel, Washington, you would get more resistance.
Because there's a lot more R one. There's, there's single family homes around that whole thing.
Yeah. Imperial, I don't know, feels like a more palatable place for it.
My, my observation was there were single family houses immediately behind those apartment buildings.
There, there are.
There are.
Yeah. I mean, walnut is right there, but.
And actually, it felt like there were less single family houses in the Washington neighborhood.
But I think those houses will like it because of the noise. There, that, that would be a nice buffer for the, for the planes.
Or, I mean, and I'm ask, I'm not asking this ironically, but or really, if you live behind, is there a difference in your shade, in yours, if you have a three story building?
Well, remember, those houses are to the south of there. So in the, at the time of the years where the sun moves towards the northwest as it sets, yes. I mean, there'd be some nominal impact on houses that were immediately adjacent if, if, if that was the case. But some of those houses also are across the street from the rear of those buildings or alleys or something like that. What, what do you find?
Yeah, I mean, in terms of shade and shadow, I think that's, that's accurate. Especially, particularly along Imperial. I, I don't think that's gonna present an issue. And the single family homes that back those properties are generally front loaded on the street anyway, so.
There's an alley in a lot of cases too.
Yeah, there's an alley. Um, and there's a slight grade differential too. So the impacts are gonna be possibly
nominal.
Less, yeah, less felt than, than the Washington area.
Well, you could, I mean, the whole idea of doing the neighborhood approach was to allow those types of variations if you wanted them.
I'll tell you from a staff perspective, our preference is to come to you with a lesser and be able to tell city council that the planning commission recommended more. So if that's the case, I, I am thankful for this conversation. So thank you, Commissioner.
Tell them Jay Heschler said.
H O E.
Right.
Give me height on Imperial. Oh, I, I'm glad you brought that up. I think that's great.
Uh, uh, there are no easy answers here. I mean, you guys are trying to, to trying to um, accommodate a state mandate. It's a, it's a very challenging thing. And so how, what do you do to, to be able to provide density? And this exercise is exactly the thing to do. And so I appreciate what you're doing. It's, uh, it's very difficult. What's the right answer? I do not know.
Whatever we say.
Yeah, that is the right answer.
Interpolated a little bit, I, you know, pedestrian scale is something that, you know, I'm hearing a little bit. And so that means, you know, maybe in addition to the, the top level percentage base, maybe there's a whatever the second top, you know, if we're talking about four stories, density bonus going five, if the fifth story is seventy percent, maybe there's a treatment for that fourth story that still allows a, some step back modulation, whatever it might be, to, to still accomplish that pedestrian scale along Imperial with a setback, with an additional setback.
Right, right. Yeah, I, I, I do believe the pedestrian perspective is probably the most important one as you're walking around town, as you're driving around town. I mean, that's, we all live at eye level, right? And so, um, you know, that extra floor is less of an issue unless you're the neighbor that lives right behind it. So I, that, that is a thing. But if the setback, you know, if, if maybe the setback on the top is actually moved away from the residential side in that case, then that, then those neighbors feel less imposed upon, you know, it's sort of.
Well, we, there are definitely transitional height um, criterion that can be written that achieve that. From, in this case, you would set the transitional height based upon where the residential interface was.
Right. So this is ironic because it didn't like, I don't know, ten years ago, we got rid of the modulation in town? I mean, we, it used to be, you'd, you can go thirty feet up.
That was for single fam-, right? Because you were getting like that layer cake look a little bit.
That's true, that's true, right. Yeah, and then, you know, suddenly my neighbor has got a thirty foot wall next to us. Whatever, whatever it is. But I do like the modulation. I mean, if, if.
One of the reasons we.
We just did that exercise, didn't we?
One of the reasons we do it as a percentage of the floor below is to acknowledge that buildings tend to be stacked. You know, the units stacked. Like arbitrary numbers, like you have to setback five feet, are actually really difficult to achieve in multifamily buildings, conventional multifamily buildings. I will say that the transitional height requirements, we we have a lot of experience with those. They tend, I, I think they work. I, I mean, they do. They do force the builder, the architect to go through a little bit more of a thought, thinking exercise as opposed to just cutting and pasting the units and projecting it up four stories. You do have to think harder. Maybe that's a good thing.
Anything else that you wanna magically add to that?
Uh, what is the process? I know you said in your uh, schedule, you've got another, there's a public forum? And what does that look like?
Uh, public forums are probably the public hearings. Yeah, the public, that'll be the public adoption process. Our timeline was slotted for, for May. Um, we're still, there's an environmental assessment that still needs to happen. It's under, it's, it's concurrently happening. We have a a firm on board who's looking at doing some of the SEQA analysis for us, uh, related to this. Some of their analysis really depended on this conversation so that we could define the true parameters of what we want them to analyze. Uh, but because we're looking at modifying the general plan, because we're looking at a significant change to the density, this is, it, it could be a full blown E I R. I'm trying to, to not go that route. That's a very lengthy and, and expensive process. So, but that's what, where the lines that we're looking at it from is, is what type of environmental do, do we need to do for this? Um, and we're hopeful that it, it'll be ready by, by this summer. Uh, but before we get there, there will be public noticing, there'll be public hearings, uh, the plant traditional zone text amendment and general plan amendment that comes to the planning commission as a public hearing and then, and then it'll go to city council. This is essentially the last formal planning commission study session. Um, and so you won't really see it again until it's essentially in its final form. Doesn't mean we can't talk about it again or, or have uh, other, other conversations or even meetings where if you wanted an update or if we needed to get additional feedback from you, staff can do that, uh, without, you know, incurring additional uh, hours or, or time of, of John's team. But, but that's essentially the process. We're looking to wrap this up by the summer. But again, a lot of that is driven by that environmental assessment that, that needs to be done.
So John goes back and does more things and next it goes to city council?
No, it's gonna come back to you
Oh, okay.
as a, as a proposed uh, text amendment, zone text amendment and a general plan.
Gotcha.
Uh, uh, land use element amendment.
And, and would that be, so I had asked Eduardo earlier if we could review this ahead of time and I realize that, you know, this has all been a work in progress. Will the next round be something that we can study prior to the, to the public or the planning commission meeting? Or is it another venue like this where we gotta kind of look at small words on screen and, 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 and you know, and, and I, I don't mean to be flippant about that. It's just nice to kind of study it a little.
Yeah, when you, no, when you see it next time, you'll have the full text, you know, published with the agenda.
Okay, great.
Yeah. And ideally, we have a lot of that information already. You know, John's team has already crafted a lot, if not all, of the, a text that corresponds with these standards. And so uh, we'll be able to provide that to the commission when we publish the agenda at that time.
Great, great. Thank you.
Is that enough for us?
Uh, yeah, we have a lot.
Is that too much?
It's the right amount.
Exactly. Perfect. Well, thank you very much. Very thorough. Great work.
Great.
Move on to a report from our community development director.
Nothing to report.
Nothing. I, I do have a question. Have we been focusing on this? Because this is part of our housing element. We did a study session like on Smoky Hollow. Are we gonna have a follow up to that anytime soon?
Um, yeah, so this is part of our, our housing element. And we're, we're under some strict deadlines on the housing element uh, piece as well. Um, much like most other cities, we're, we're behind where they would like us to be in in certifying our housing elements. And this is the last piece before the state will actually formally certify the housing element. And they have told us as, as much that everything else is good, but you need to finish this density piece in order for us to, to certify your housing element. So we're, you know, we'd love to, to get this piece done. And so it's prior, you know, we're prioritizing our time on this. But um, Paul Samaras is, is coordinating with the consultants that are doing the Smoky Hollow uh, cleanup. Um, Eduardo might be able to share when that's coming back. But also what will be coming back to you is the downtown specific plan. Paul Samaras is also working with the consultant team to, to get that uh, out to the public as well. We've received an administrative draft on that document. And so we're providing some feedback and that will be, the draft document will be published this summer as, as well. And, and that'll be coming back to you probably sooner than the Smoky Hollow specific plan cleanup. But Eduardo, I don't know if you have any updates on Smoky Hollow?
No, I, I, no, I think you're right. I mean, in terms, in terms of prioritization, yeah, it's the housing element right now. Um, and we all kind of have a, a different piece of that pie. Um, this is part of it. Smoky Hollow, we have M I G who's kind of doing some, some tweaks on, on the text. Although it may be simple, seem simple enough. There's just, you know, there's just other cleanup things that we wanna have them focus on. Um, but the second priority is, is the downtown specific plan. Uh, we had come before the council a couple of months ago to give them a, a, a presentation update as to where we're at and how, uh, what, what we've done to get to this point. Um, so that's uh, priority number two. Although we are trying to get an actual draft out uh, by summer. Um, as, as Michael indicated, we do, we did get an administrative draft. And that's, hopefully will lead to more of a kind of a, a public version that we will end up putting out for public consumption, comment and, 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 and feedback on. Uh, and then with that, we'll kind of clean it up. That also has a component of, of an environmental SEQA, which we're right now embarking upon doing. Um, you know, the, the I R process for that. So that's, uh, that's why that will come before the, ultimately come before the for the commission and the council for formal adoption late, um, late summer into fall.
Um, the, um, the gateway entrance there on, on Imperial, um, can you do, like, in one paragraph, give us an update? Not long diatribe, I'm just looking for a little update.
Yeah, the, the, the last thing I heard was this week, uh, during our executive team meeting, uh, they had a bid opening either last week or the week prior, and there were no bids submitted for that project.
For, for fabrication and installation?
For the project in, yeah, in its entirety.
But it's, because it's already been designed, right?
Fabrication, landscaping, you know, so there's a whole demo component. Um, there were two teams or two contractors who showed up to the, uh, they have like a bid orientation where you sort of take, take a poll of who's, who's interested. You walk through the document, they ask questions and um, that's generally a qualifier to be a, a submitter to, or somebody who's qualified to submit or respond to the bid. Um, and neither of those contractors submitted an offer. So I don't have an update on what's happening next. I know the public works department is looking at other options of negotiating directly with somebody and, and sort of bypassing the formal bid process. But there's a lot of hoops that need to be uh, jumped through. Joaquin's making a face.
I know that face.
It's a very unusual, it's a very unusual thing to happen. And so I, I don't know the likelihood of it. I don't know uh, what that process will look like. Um, but it's obviously not happening very soon.
Anytime soon. Okay. Thanks, Michael.
Sorry, Joaquin.
A great segue into, do we have anything from the city attorney's office?
Nothing against them. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, planning commissioner comments?
Uh, none, none today, really?
I, I have a quick one. Um, there is a crosswalk on uh, Main Street, just north of the high school. It's at Oak Avenue. And um, it is, it's been a, uh, it's a challenging crosswalk. It's crazy. Fortunately, there's a, I, I live on Oak. Um, there are a couple moms on our street that are pushing to have either a stop sign put there. I think at one point, I recommended an at grade flashers like we have here on Main Street. And I guess I just wanna say that it is, it's a scary crosswalk.
Is that, there was an incident? Are you bringing that up?
There have been several incidents.
There was just, I think, yesterday.
Then, then there you go. Then there was an incident yesterday.
After school.
Yeah, and, and you know, it's the high schools right there. There's kids. There's kids, cars are going, you know, I think it's an 80 mile an hour zone on Main Street there. Anyway, it's just it needs something. And if it's not a stop sign, I would love to see at-grade flashers, just like we have here in the downtown district. So something to notify motorists that there are actual pedestrians.
And we have a hometown fair coming up. The date, do you know the dates? I see the signs. Okay, when it's coming?
Soon.
Next, we'll report next. But for that, how is that something that we can elevate?
No, well, other than bringing it up, right? And bringing it up to city council and I just want to talk about it so it's on people's radar.
Yeah, got it.
I think that's the traffic commissioner. Do we have a.
There's a traffic committee. I'm happy to pass the word on to Elias's shop. Public Works can take that to to the traffic committee.
Please do, thank you.
And see where that can go.
Yeah, yeah, it's a it's a dangerous crosswalk. Thank you, Michael.
The hometown fair is May 6.
Thank you.
A less dangerous, so that's.
And I think just for me, I wanted to acknowledge Fire Chief Lee's retirement today, early retirement. So thank her for 20 years of service in El Segundo, which is pretty remarkable. And I will miss her definitely and hope she comes around and stays connected. I'm sure she will. So thank you. I think that's it. Thanks, everybody. Meeting adjourned.